Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. This is a special session for the agenda. If I can remind everyone to silence their cellphones. And Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Mayor Protem James Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle?
Here. If I can get everyone to rise, remove your caps, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Stacy? Are we televising this? Before we start, I'm not sure, first of all, I want to thank the crowd for being here today. It's wonderful. In the 10 years that I've been the City Council, I've, budget meetings, usually we have one or two community participants, so maybe it's because of the difficult budget we're having, but I want to thank you all for being here because public participation absolutely does help and we really appreciate it. And then before I get started, and I'm not sure why we have a group here tonight, but some of you may have seen an interview I was on, on KCOY television where they asked me about the animal shelter and why I voted against the 30-day extension. In that comment, I made a comment, or in my remarks, I made a comment that who would want to see rabid dogs running our streets? Well, that was a mistake. Very, very few dogs, domestic animals, have rabies. Rabies are seen in bats and other animals, but not necessarily in dogs, cats. So that was a mistake on my part. So I don't want to cause a panic in our community. We are not going to have rabid dogs running throughout our community, so I just want to make that clarification. I apologize for that comment. It was not meant in that way. Okay, we're going to open up for all communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that is before this council. And just come to the podium, state your name. Seeing no one rise, we're going to, ah, good, okay.
I am Carrie Topliff. I'm the interim director for Santa Barbara County's Public Health Department, and I am just here to address you tonight about animal services. I'm sorry that when you talked about the contract extension earlier, we weren't here to give you a little more information. You are probably aware that you are legally mandated to provide a rabies control program, a dog licensing program, a stray animal shelter with minimum holding periods, as well as prompt and necessary services to animals who need medical care, and a spay and neuter program for animals that are going to be adopted. We feel like our partnership with you has been very good over the past years and are very eager that we would continue. The Board of Supervisors has embarked on a multi-year program with us and our partners in the community to really enhance our animal services and make them something that all our communities can be proud of in a way that will really enhance the safety of the public. They have put additional funds into the program this year. We are spending $5.7 million, and we hope that even in these difficult budget times, you'll be able to find the $323,000 to fund your share of programs here in Lompoc City. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, did you want, okay, never mind, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council and Lompoc residents. My name is Jan Glick, and I'm the Director of the Animal Services Program for the County of Santa Barbara. I've been with the county for 18 years, and here to support our longstanding partnership that we've had with the City of Lompoc to provide animal services. Our budget model, or our operational model, is we partner with seven of the eight cities within Santa Barbara County for services, and that includes full services for six of the eight cities, sheltering services only for one of the cities. As Ms. Topliff mentioned, the city is required to provide mandated services through the Health and Safety Code of 121690. Local government is required to provide a pound system and a rabies control system. And the rabies control requirements include dog licensing for dogs four months and older, rabies vaccination for dogs three months and older, provision of vaccination clinics, the maintenance of a pound system, and quarantine for bites as part of, all as part of the rabies control program. The shelter requirements include the stray animal shelter and certain minimal holding periods for strays, as well as spay and neuter for adoption animals. Through Health and Safety Code 101375, the city is authorized to allow for enforcement of the duties of the county health officer, which include orders and quarantine regulations and statutes regarding public health. Suspension of the contract really risks endangerment of the public and a decrease in public safety regarding dangerous and vicious animals in the city, dog attacks and bite investigations. Would also diminish services for stray and injured and deceased animals. As part of the full-service shelter, we are open six days a week to serve the public, and in addition to housing stray animals, owners bring their animals for relinquishment. We sell animal licenses. We provide information on responsible pet ownership, animal care and counseling to the public on animal issues. We also provide the service of euthanasia for owners who have made that decision for their animals. How will the city be able to stand up an animal shelter in a little over a month? We've built successful partnerships with our shelter-based nonprofit organizations, the Kappa Organization, Care for Paws, and Viva, and these are additional resources that contribute to animal welfare in Lompoc, so I urge you to maintain our contractual relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Glick, real quick, I, just a couple of questions. This came up because of the amount of the contract. Basically, we're looking at $25,000 a month according to what we budgeted and what you have requested that we pay you. We haven't got answers yet on what your kick-in is for the unincorporated areas. Are we sustaining it? Are you guys paying your fair share, you being the county? You know, we donated multiple thousands of dollars several years ago for the rehabilitation of the shelter out there. I mean, there's a lot of volunteers, and it's just a lot of money. Like you said, only 360-some thousand in this budget cycle, so, you know, we don't need to be sold on it or what the rules are, but we're just trying to justify the cost to the taxpayers.
So the county animal services budget in a really broad overview would be about one-third city contract revenue, one-third of fees to consumers, and one-third of general fund from the county. About two years ago, the county, as part of our continuous improvement program, added $300,000 of general fund to the program. So that would be for us to augment our services and improve our services, which has resulted in improvements in veterinary care, behavior assessments, and our field services. I think that our methodology, which is a per capita basis, is applied to all of our cities. So there's a certain per capita fee that's applied for the provision of the services, and it's multiplied by the population of the city. So it's a formula as to how we come up with the contract fees, and it's applied evenly to all the cities. I did bring a list of the services that are provided to the cities, which is part of the contract. In regard to the renovation that was done, it took about two years between July of 2011 and June of 2013. The county's project for the renovation of the Lompoc Shelter was about $457,000. Of that, the City of Lompoc contributed some CDBG funding, and that was $24,000. So that was about 5% of the cost of the project. The rest of the funds came from our capital fund, private donations, a bequest, some SB 90 funding that we had, some TSAC funding that we had, nonprofit donations, and other CDB funding from the county. And a big part of the project was to ensure that we had ADA access. And if you saw the shelter before and you've seen it since, you know it's a very much improved So I believe that the county definitely covers its share. There are certain costs of government that can't be passed on to cities, and those are never included in the city contract calculations.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lingle and members of the council. My name is Lee Heller. I've been a volunteer working on animal welfare and public safety issues in Santa Barbara County for about 20 years. Over those years, I've fostered dozens of dogs and cats from Lompoc and adopted a few for myself along the way. I also played a key role in helping to fund the recent refurbishment of the Lompoc Animal Shelter, which Jan was just talking about. In addition to personally donating $10,000, a gift that was references coming from a veterinarian at your last meeting, but actually came from me, I wrote the grant application that brought in an additional $10,000 from the Brown Family Foundation. I did this because I saw how great the need was and how limited the resources are to meet it in this community. Beyond that, I've been involved for years in helping Lompoc with its animal problems. Because of the high poverty rate here, which is 5% or more above the county median, I helped Care for Paws to bring in $62,000 in PetSmart charities grant money to spay and neuter 700 dogs in the city. I've also helped both Care for Paws and Shadows Fund with projects from purchasing a mobile unit to funding dog obedience classes to make dogs safer for the community. I'm here tonight because I'm so concerned about the decision to let your contract lapse with no time to put together an alternative that will protect Lompoc's people and animals and enforce the state-mandated programs that Jan and Carrie have laid out for you. I know that you feel you're being overcharged for services, but the fact is, Lompoc's animal needs are being subsidized by the county and by private funding sources. It isn't just the money being spent by the C3s that I just described who work in partnership with animal services, as well as money from PetSmart, which now is over $100,000 because they also funded Viva. The shelter was funded by only 5% of city money, so you used 65% of that shelter for your impounded animals. I did the numbers today. You paid 5% for that refurbishment. You are being subsidized. We are helping you to make your ends meet because we know you're struggling, but we need you to help too and not just walk away from this. As someone who has worked with and written grants for most of the animal nonprofits in the county, I can tell you there is no organization in the region with the resources, expertise, or interest in replacing animal services as a contract provider. A small group of disgruntled former shelter volunteers have been putting this notion forward. There is no basis in fact for an organization to come in and step up and take the place of animal services. The only national organization that has ever done this, Best Friends, was asked twice to do Santa Barbara and turned down twice. I've served on the California Veterinary Medical Board. Veterinarians don't want to sell licenses for you. They have enough to do, and they're already facing a heavy legal load, and they're not going to do your work and not get paid. So what you're going to end up having to do is to cobble together a program where you ask the police to do more work when they're already stretched thin, vets to do something for free that they already don't want to do, and you're not going to be able to meet your state mandate. So I encourage you to revisit this decision, or at least take the time over the next year to come up with a workable alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, what we want to do is we appreciate your enthusiasm, but let's keep the applause down because we have business to conduct, so just thank the people as it goes, so applause.
Good evening, Mayor Lingle and council members. My name is Brian Haremio, Lompoc resident and Director of People Support Services in Lompoc Unified School District. One of my main roles is to ensure the safety of all 9,700 students in our district on a daily basis. I am here to tell you how essential the crossing guards are to our community and the safety of our students, parents, and other caregivers. As you probably know, traffic at an elementary school before and after school is difficult to manage, with parents rushing to drop off children and get to work or get home. Other parents work early in the morning and leave their small children to walk to school all alone and to walk home. Without crossing guards, there is a significant safety risk at all of our schools in the community. I hope the City of Lompoc, even in difficult budget times, continues to partner with the school district to provide this service to the children of our community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lingle and council members. I am Jill Anderson, co-founder of Shadows Fund, a local rescue animal welfare organization, and a 12-year Lompoc resident. We've maintained a partnership with Santa Barbara County Animal Services for roughly eight years, and two years ago, I was appointed to work on a committee alongside animal services, many nonprofit organizations, and community stakeholders. Working alongside these folks, I can tell you two things with great certainty. One, there are no local private organizations that want to take on the role of animal services. I was surprised greatly when my own organization was approached about this. Two, the role that animal services plays in protecting public health and safety is not only critical, it's enormous. And let me just elaborate for a moment on that. Impounding stray dogs off the streets to prevent incidents of attacks on bites on dogs and people. Curbing the spread of communicable diseases like parvo. Preventing unwanted litters that would surely occur from unaltered animals simply roaming the streets. Being first responders when there are injured stray animals, incidents of neglect or abuse. And also something that you may not realize, animal services doesn't just do their job, they bring considerable resources to the table because of decades of partnerships that have been built. These partners provide medical care, they provide vaccination and spay-neuter, behavior and medical rehabilitation. Our own small organization, and we're one of many partners, has an annual budget of $250,000, more than 90% of which is spent on animals in this county. Leveraging these longstanding relationships makes our community safer, it brings more resources to the table, and it decreases the burden on taxpayers. Simply letting them run is not a solution. It means the spread of disease, it means more incidents of attacks, it means unwanted litters. It's not a solution, it would be a train wreck. And if the public health implications were not enough, it's worth pointing out that Lompoc is a compassionate community. And just to illustrate that, how many people are here in support of renewing the contract with animal services? Please reconsider the decision. The Lompoc taxpayers want to see this contract renewed. It's something we care deeply about. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. Mayor, my name is Erin Cranger. I am the treasurer and on the board of directors of Companion Animal Placement Assistance, also known as Kappa. We support specifically the Lompoc Shelter by augmenting medical services, networking, adoptable animals, and a wide variety of other things that the county just can't afford to do on their budget. What I'm here tonight to discuss with you is what it means to negotiate that contract, and to make sure you understand that when you ask them to negotiate that contract, what you're asking them to negotiate is a euthanasia rate. Without funding, our euthanasia rate will skyrocket. So you should really consider that when you think of your own personal political capital. There were a lot of things that were said at the last meeting that were actually very derogatory towards animal services. This is an emotional issue for all of us. And really stop and consider, when we were able to announce our 92% live release rate, which lets us consider ourselves a no-kill shelter, the Lompoc residents turned around and started dumping animals again. What's going to happen with City Council if you're the council that cancels the contract completely and the county euthanasia rate skyrockets? I'd be happy to answer any questions as well. Actually, to make one more point, Kappa was awarded grant funding for the project that you talked about, Councilwoman Starbuck, in the amount of $35,000. We also chipped in $25,000 of our own for a total contribution of $60,000. Did you have a question?
No, I was trying to see if you were done, but please, take all your time.
Nope. End my point, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. My name is Carlos Sabiti. I represent Care for Paws. I'm a co-founder. We've actually been working in Lompoc for the past five years. A little bit of numbers, in those five years, we have spayed and neutered over 3,000 animals, and we have rabies vaccinated over 7,000 animals, especially uniquely to Lompoc. Okay? We have only been able to reach this critical community, all our services are for free, and we work with low-income people. The only reason that we have been able to reach this sector of the population is because of our partnership with animal services. They're out, they're canvassing, they're reaching people, they're giving them the resources, information, and education in order for them to make the right decisions. Every time we have a clinic, they're there selling licenses, they're educating. They're an invaluable resource that we have. Over half of our budget, which is $350,000 a year, comes into Lompoc to serve these programs. So I am really upset about this decision. We need them. If we don't have them, we will go back to rabid dogs on the street. Who's going to take care of them? You know, it takes a village, it really does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Hi, I'm Perry Getz. I am an advisory board member with Shadows Fund, and I assist with their veterinary medical protocols. I have 15 years of veterinary technician experience. That's why I'm part of their advisory board. I'm here to discuss and bring up, by canceling the contract with animal services, it will cause problems with dogs out in the streets with medical conditions that can have parvo distemper, which is contagious to other dogs, dogs that are with homes, but they can be exposed to parvo, which is an intestinal parasite and can cause death, distemper, which is an airborne and also deadly disease. And if these dogs that are in the wild that don't have a place to go have those conditions, it can cause death to dogs that are people's companions. Another problem would be an animal that has giardia, which is also contagious to humans, and that can be in groundwater or open bodies of water. So if you have dogs that are not in shelters, and if the shelter is not available, and that dog has giardia and it has access to open water or standing water, people can get that from a dog. So in my personal experience, a dog that I picked up in King City on the side of the road, when King City had canceled their contract with Monterey County Animal Services, I had picked up a dog that had been a stray up there, took it to a veterinarian. That veterinarian had said, "There's nowhere for this dog to go. There's no shelters because we have canceled our contract with animal services." And that dog had giardia, that dog had other skin conditions, and it was emaciated, and I asked him where I should take it, and he's like, "There's nowhere. Our strays in King City are set free. There's nowhere for this animal to go. Your option is to let it go and let it run wild, or you can take it home with you and see if you can find a home for it." So it actually lives at our house now, after we treated it for giardia and got it neutered because it was an intact male and cleared up its skin conditions, and that was five years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Grace Handlin. I've been a citizen of Lompoc for 30 years. And unfortunately, I think I've seen our character change recently. I moved back into town. You know, Lompoc, we used to be responsible for our homes, for our neighborhoods, for our pets, our children, and walking my dog every day, twice a day, I see numerous code violations. And what that says to me is we've got, and a lot of them, we've got people who just don't care anymore. They don't care about the rules, they don't care about basic responsibility and decency. I'm concerned, I also know that I see a lot of ads, you know, puppies for sale, and I do know from volunteering with the shelter, with Shadows Fund, they have a litter of puppies, they make some good cash, what doesn't sell goes out on the street. They don't care. You're going to have people, and with nobody monitoring, it seems like unless there's a legal contingent, people are going to run wild. You're going to have a lot of, people are just going to go, "Let's have litters. Nobody's watching us. There's money to be made. There's no rules. Nobody's going to find us, nobody's going to catch us or stop us. Let's make some cash and dump the dogs that don't sell, dump the females that have been bred to death out on the streets, and there's nobody to stop them." I think it's a problem that will bloom in a hurry. I'm very concerned about it. I'm concerned about our town. I support you. I know bills have to be paid, and there's only so much money to go around, but I think this involves not only dogs' lives, it involves children's lives. Yes, it is a problem. And who's going to stop it when all of the dogs and the cats start appearing on the streets? Who's going to go and get them? So anyway, I support you. I volunteer in this community, I do whatever I can, and I understand the situation you're in, but I think this is a mistake to close our shelter. And thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Whitney, and I've been a longtime volunteer for several of the organizations that have also spoken here, Care for Paws, Shadows Fund, also the County Animal Services out at the Lompoc Shelter. I've been around animal services now for almost nine years. I've worked for the city for 20 as a law enforcement officer, and as you can see, the contract with animal services and the city not just affects us here in the city, it affects all of the other organizations that are an integral part of how it works. And it does take a village, and I would ask you all to revisit your decision to terminate the services and reconsider extending a lengthy review of what animal services can provide for Lompoc. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chris Starling, 30-year resident. I sympathize with the animal control situation and hope that we can keep that facility open. That said, I want to address a larger issue tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't have to look long and hard to find governmental bodies that have spent themselves into debt. This week, the government bureaucrats in Illinois, the land of Lincoln, the state which Barack Obama launched his political career in, is bankrupt. And it is setting a record for unfunded pensions of $1 trillion, with a T, dollars. This is not unusual, however. I wish it was. The most successful city in the Midwest was Detroit. It filed Chapter 9 last July 18th, a billion dollars in debt. Orange County, $2 billion in debt, bankrupt. Orange County, $2 billion in debt, bankrupt. Stockton, $1 billion, bankrupt. San Bernardino, $500 million, bankrupt. And I could go on and on. The loss of services, pensions, and the humiliation of management does not have to happen. Now, these cities are doing what they should have done decades ago. I say we need to follow their lead for recovery. Number one, we have to freeze all hiring. Number two, we must consolidate responsibilities, we must shrink government through efficiency and accountability. We have to cut job duplication and waste. We need to create in Lompoc a situation and growth through expansion of the monetary base and build the Bailey Corridor Project now. I have pointed out the miserable state of our city's retail small businesses, but all of you see it every time you drive down Ocean Avenue. Empty storefronts, closed, boarded up, once thriving restaurants deserted and demolished old city landmarks. We can do better. Where are the plans for a partner-friendly relationship with small business here in Who in our city government is making it easier to get a business up and running? We didn't need high-paid bureaucrats who make it impossible to meet codes and requirements that hurt our city, instead making it frustrating and expensive. How about extending a hand to those businessmen and encourage them to work together? The strength of our city depends on this.
Okay, sir, I need you to wrap it up now.
Okay. I just have a little bit more to go.
Try to summarize what you have in the next 15, 20 seconds.
I'll tell you what, here we go. The city can find the resources. It will require leadership, it will require backbone, but now is the time to get going, to buckle down, to change the old tired easy solutions of yesterday. Those old tired solutions, they will just, well, they'll bankrupt us. No, there's another way. It's not an easy path. It's steep and it's littered with obstacles, but it's the right path. I trust you to make the cuts. It won't be easy, but we are depending on you. I want you to look to the heart. Punishing the poor and defenseless and underrepresented, including dogs, through tax cuts, I mean through taxes, is out of the question, unthinkable and wrong.
Okay, sir, I need your-
We must not, we cannot, please.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close. Oops, here we go.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Cody Rackley, 12-year resident. I recently finished a term of employment with Imre's. I was a procurement manager there. So I fully understand working within budgets and limited resources. I just, I'm here to speak on, I'm also a co-founder of Shadows Fund. I'm here to speak on the Animal Services issue. Many great points were already made. I just wanted to add that at, one of my biggest concerns is that the added stress it would have on our law enforcement. I believe there's between 2,000 and 3,000 calls per year for animal control officers and that would just devastate our already limited police officers. So again, there are a lot of other great comments made, but I'll keep it short and simple. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, bring it back to the council. I want to thank you all for your comments. I believe we all learned a little bit tonight, so I thank you for that. Mr. Panoni, at this meeting, if we desire, can we reconsider our vote for a 30-day extension? At this meeting, can we reconsider that?
If you, if you want to make part of the budget, the expansion to include the contract, yes, you can do that tonight. If you want to take a specific action to undo what you did last meeting, then we'll need to have a special meeting to do that.
Or at the next council meeting.
Yes, because we still have a month. Yes, that would work too.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, bring it back to council, Mr. Wyman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a couple of brief things to kick off from the last session we had on, on budgets. There was some interest in knowing what other, what other cities in Santa Barbara County are doing in terms, so we'd have the comparable TOT. I think we had described this verbally, but just to show you, these are for the unincorporated areas of Santa Barbara County and for most other cities, it's at 12%. Santa Maria and Lompoc are at 10%. For the question about utility users' tax, and just looking at the Central Coast region, found eight cities that had a UUT and you can see which ones they are and at what percentage levels. Sir?
How, how many have zero?
I, I assume everybody else, these are the eight we found.
Okay.
So I think there's about 24 cities or so in the Central Coast, so probably that would leave about 16 that don't have any.
Are any of those full-service cities?
By full service, you mean?
Own their own power, water, wastewater, electric?
Most of them have, by view, I don't think any of them have electric. Most of them have water, wastewater, from my review and understanding of them off the top of my head. Cities with local sales tax, oh, but if, if you're asking therefore would those be taxed, these, they do tax whether they provide, under a UUT, whether the city provides the utility services or whether, like an investor-owned utility, PG&E as an example, that UUT applies to their electric service, their cable service or whatever. The cities in the area with local, with some level of so, local sales tax, you see Santa Paula has a 1%. There are about 10 cities existing that have a half a percent in place, coupled with a quarter percent. Local sales tax in, in the unincorporated area of Santa Barbara County is also a half percent, so as close as like Vandenberg Village and Mission Hills, they have the half a percent that have been proposed here. City of Santa Barbara, this is an outtake, is considering a 1% sales tax ballot measure and had commissioned a survey to gauge voter's support for their proposed 1%. It was in their survey with their voters, and not necessarily what would be the case here, but it's the only one I had to look at in the area, they had, they were supported by 64% of those surveyed. And an interesting subclassification was, the support was actually in a higher percentage by people making less than $50,000 than it was people making over $100,000 for whatever that indicates. Yes, sir.
There's a restriction on that though, isn't it? Just for streets and sidewalks?
In their case, they're describing what that, what it would do. So I'm not sure it has the legal description. I think they're going for the majority rather than the two-thirds, but they are expressing their intent and absolutely we should be expressing our intent of what services we were seeking to provide or protect as a result of that. They also mentioned the importance of having some sort of citizen taxpayer oversight. We support that concept as well.
Yeah, I think they, I saw the mayor on TV saying it was a street and sidewalk that they're looking at, which-
Yeah, they were, yes, they were looking. In their case, had a number of different infrastructure issues. So anyway, wanted to share that information. About the only other comments I had to add, normally, as I've said before, I don't usually respond to anything that might be on the forums. I don't read them, except that I, some of the things that were, that I'm hearing were being said, I'm actually reading and it's kind of disturbing. Local newspaper, there was a guest editorial and it even had the word fax in the headline and it started talking about, somehow pointed me, somehow this has become about me, that I was receiving, I had received a $30,000 pay increase every year that I've been here. I just wanted to reiterate what you know, and that is, I, my salary has been unchanged my entire time here. And in fact, what some people don't know is I actually took a 3.7% reduction per pay period last year. Didn't get out in the news, wasn't, I'm not bragging about that or anything. There was a reason for doing it to make sure that we didn't have, because it was a 27 pay period year, that I didn't have any exceedance. So we went ahead and did that out of an abundance of caution. So I can't speak for what might be reported in transparent California or where they're getting their data from, but I have had no increase in pay nor benefits in my entire time here. Just wanted to get that on the table.
Mr. Wyman, just for another clarification, what city do you live in?
Lompoc.
You live in Lompoc. So the rumor that you have a big fancy home in the city of Santa Barbara is not true?
I only own one piece of real estate and that is in Lompoc, California.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wyman? Anything else you want to discuss with us tonight?
I'm just looking forward to our, working our way through this. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, who wants to start? If no one else wants to, I will. Okay. We have made very, very little, if any, progress since we started this in May, beginning of May. As a matter of fact, some would consider that we've actually taken a couple steps backward because when we were presented with a draft budget, it was balanced, but it eliminated funds for many of the outside agencies in our community to the extent of about $600,000 a year. We have reinstated all those, so we are now $600,000 less, there's less of, $600,000 behind from where we were when we started in May, I believe it was May 2nd. So what I'd like to propose, this will take several steps, but I'd like to see us adopt the draft budget that was presented to us in May. We could restore, with that draft budget, we could restore all the outside agencies with the exception of the council, Chamber of Commerce advertising, which the president CEO of the Chamber of Commerce said that they could do without, so that was, take that out, but all other outside agencies without the advertising for this Chamber of Commerce. Take dollars from our reserve fund, our rainy day fund, to pay for those outside agencies. Instruct staff to place all three tax measures on the 2018 budget. I think it is extremely, well, it's unwise for us to decide for the voters what should happen with these taxes. Let the voters decide. It is not right for us to decide. So instruct staff to put the, all three tax measures on the ballot for 2018. Instruct staff to prepare different alternate budgets in case any or all of these tax measures fail. So starting, let's say we adopt this budget tonight, which I hope we do, starting immediately, staff starts working on alternate budgets that would be immediately put into place if one, two, or any combination of the tax measures fail. They would take, that, those budgets would take place immediately after the 2018 election. The budget should, this, these alternate budgets consist, excuse me, these alternate budgets could, should consist of service cuts and employee consolations in the form of a hiring freeze. It was mentioned here this evening. I'm not in favor of, right now, cutting our current salaries for our employees because as I explained last time, since 2008, our employees have sacrificed. They went without raises for six years. They recently had a pay increase, but that just brought them back to where they were six years ago. They suffered furloughs for four years. The furloughs were equivalent to probably a 15 or 20% cut. So we balance prior budgets on the backs of our employees. They are still trying to recover. Now, if we pass this, we accept this draft budget and tax measures don't fail, everyone is going to have to pay something. The service cuts will be paid by every city, every city resident, including the city employees that live in, in the city. But everyone is going to have to share this burden. It can't be just on the backs of our city employees again. So that is going to be my motion, that we, and I'll go over again if anyone wants clarification on. So that's my motion and I'd like to have a second on that. Okay, with no second, we'll go back and I'd like to hear other people's proposals. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say we have made significant progress. It was just not too long ago you said we couldn't cut our way out of it and actually what staff brought back, it does show that we, we can with a simple 4% net, cut one simple 4% reset, that we can, we can reposition ourselves and we can fund everything, including Animal Services, all the nonprofits, including their, their advertising budget. And I think it's important to understand what we're looking at doing this for. And this 4% net cut is to help protect and preserve the pension funds of the city employees. And in, in going back and looking in some of the areas that, where we could do this, we've had some experiments that we've tried over the years, in the last four to six years. And I think some of them need to be reset, we need to readjust, tighten the belt, maybe one or two of these areas need, need to go away right now. And understanding that, that in two years, our general fund will be back right at the same number where it is now because we're anticipating a 2% increase in personnel expenses each year for the next 10 years, according to page 138 in the Budget Book, and a 2.2% annual increase in operational expenses. So I think we've come a long way and we see that there is an opportunity and there is another way out. I think it's not proper to anticipate, I don't think it's a balanced budget if you put forward and you accept it on, on potential hypothetical taxes of $1.6 million and a half million in sales in real estate. So I, I don't think that's truly a balanced budget. I don't, I would be surprised if the state would accept that as a balanced budget because the taxes haven't passed. They haven't even been put forward to be put on. But I think there is an opportunity and there's a way to, to get that. We just need to look at areas that have gone up. I just, as, as an example, city administration expenses from 1113 to what they're asking for now have gone from 2.8 million to 4.2 million. So I think there's an area there that we can go. That's, that's four years. In four years, that movement has moved that far. Public Works Engineering, 1.8 million to 2.7 million. So I think there's some areas there that we can look at. We've, we're fully staffed with engineering, we don't have a lot going on. Community development planning has gone from $600,000 to 2.7 million. Economic development from a half million to 1.1 million. Building inspection from 600,000 to a million. We have four GIS texts that they're trying to bring in. I don't think we need that many GIS texts. I think two of the vacancies are still right there. So if we held those positions off, you wouldn't have to bring in. So if we held those positions off, you wouldn't have to bring in. You know, I, I can go on further. The fire department went from 7.3 million to 11.6 million in four years. There was a little bit of experiment went there. We, we came in after the, the Safer Grant went out and we funded some positions. For many, many years, we operated with an auxiliary position. We don't have to reset that all the way back, but I think there's opportunities there. We've been very experimental with the fire marshal. Our fire chief used to be our fire marshal and the acting battalion chiefs were the deputy fire marshals. We now have an isolated, all standalone fire marshal position. So we've, we've had some experiments that we tried. Economics are, are telling us that we need to tighten the belt and we need to take a look at this. But there's several millions of dollars right here that we need to focus on and look at. We haven't, we haven't even put one, not one single cut has come on here. We have 5.5 new positions right now, we 10 and a half new positions last, last budget cycle. We have a multitude of new titles coming to people on here and, and not one cut has been put forward except asking the people to give up what potentially would be a $300 to $500 a year tax per household. I'm calling it the Christmas tax. Give up Christmas as you know it, everybody, if this tax passes. Because that's $500 a year of disposable income from the people in this town that the people don't have. And I, we saw some, some more footage up here of the hypothetical taxes and taxes that are solid in other areas, but it's apples to oranges comparison, really is. And I, I really don't see, your, your councilmember Starbuck say this, that the people out there are not going to impose that, especially when you're imposing a tax to cover pension obligations. This isn't to fix streets, sidewalks, keep the library open longer. This is a tax for pensions. So I think we need to look at it this other way. We did a report, an independent report coming from City Hall to show that with a 4% net, one time, reset. Now mind you, the following year, you, you would still have a 2% increase in personnel expense. The next year, you have a 2% increase as well. So I think there are other alternatives.
Mr. Wyman Miller, Mr. Wilkey, would you be able to comment to any of those comments?
I would, thank you. First of all, to say there has been no cuts, before you got your draft of this budget, we made 4.1 million dollars in cuts. So, to say that there have been no cuts made is, I, I don't believe is an accurate description. Certainly, I, I also disagree that this is the intent of the tax measure. Certainly my intent in recommending those was not necessarily, I, I don't believe it, it gets, that it's what's causing the, the unfunded liability to be paid. We're going to have to pay that unfunded liability. We inherited it, you inherited it, I inherited it, we all inherited that. So we have to pay that. So whether that, those measures were to attack, pass or not, would, is not what's going to guide whether or not that's paid or not. That's going to get paid. So, the purpose of the recommendation was that, to preserve services as we, as, as we know them. And certainly we've heard in this session and other sessions from people and how they feel about the preservation of services. Finally, again, this isn't necessarily a tax, this is not a tax you would be imposing. As I've said all along, I am asking to let the voters decide. I would like to have the opportunity for the voters to become educated as to what services are at stake and what would be, what would, the vote would depend on and let the people vote on that. And certainly then what their decision would be, should be what, what rules. I, again, don't understand the opposition to allowing people, allowing the electorate to make that decision.
Mr. Wyman Miller, the comment that I made that I don't think we could cut our way out of this at this point and Councilmember Mosby seems to think that that 4% would take care of our problem, including I guess the $70 million, would you comment on that?
You know, Mr. Mosby made some good point, points in that I appreciate that he's at least getting to some specifics about highlighting programs because that's where I would suggest if we are, if we indeed are going to go down the cutting of services, let's recognize what that is. It's real sexy to talk about budget cuts, but it's a little tougher to talk about reduction in services. I mean, that's exactly what we got the flavor of here tonight. We could talk about budget cuts and all, it's cutting that budget line item, but it becomes very real when we start talking about the services that are being reduced or eliminated that go along with that. So, I still, I, the, the difficulty I have right now, because we haven't really gotten in when we did this 4%, 5% and 6% analysis, Mr. Mosby's estimation of the percentage and what that 4% does is indeed, like, you know, give him credit. Mathematically, yes, that, that works. What doesn't work is how this collides with other, with, with other values or statements that have been made by, by council. So for instance, at one point, Mr. Starbuck made the statement, yeah, this shouldn't be balanced on the backs of employees. They, they've been giving and giving and giving and this is something inherited from the, the past that we're trying to deal with. So if we were to look at that and say, okay, we're going to leave employees unaffected in the general fund, pay and benefits make up, it's largely a labor organization, pay and benefits make up 76% of the general fund. That leaves 24%. So to do a 4%, 4% cut of the general fund, and if you're going to leave pay and benefits alone, that means you've got to cut about 16% out of the, out of the general fund budget, all out of, about 16% of the purchases that occur. So about one of every $6. That gets to be kind of challenging because as I pointed out, one, one purchase we make, for instance, is for fuel. It's used by police and fire and we can't merely tell them, hey, every six call, don't run on that call and we won't burn the fuel. We can't do that, we still have to respond to every call. So, you'd have to say, well, fuel's off, off the market. And then, we still have to make full payments on our insurance policies. We don't get to take a reduction. So mathematically, it works. When we really get into what are we cutting, what purchases we're cutting or what services we're cutting, that's where the rubber meets the road. So we can, we can strive toward that as, as an exercise certainly, but until we're comfortable with what those sacrifices really mean in terms of pay and benefits, I don't think we have a complete picture yet.
Councilmember Osborne.
First, I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight. It's interesting if you hit the right button on what is an issue for someone, how you'll turn out and share what your opinions are. So I want you to go home and think about how passionate you are about the dogs and cats in our community and care for them, and think about the whole budget. Because what we're talking about right now is having to cut services. So something else in order to pay for these other things that we are mandated to have will have to go away. And that's the reason for the tax measure proposals is what do you want to see returned that will be cut? Because there is revenue need and the only three areas that we can receive revenue for the general fund are hotel tax, sales tax, and property tax. Well, houses aren't being built, so we don't have additional property taxes coming in unless we start thinking about annexing. So, just going to put that out there, somebody's here. There's TOT that we're leaving on the table because of our neighbors already charging 12% and that's to visitors, that's not to us. When I go stay somewhere, I look at a hotel room rate, not at what my tax is going to be on that room because I have no control over that. And then finally, there's the sales tax. Now, I don't know if many of you realize this, but the state have, had a half cent sales tax on the entire state for nearly 10 years. And as of the November 2016, it sunsetted and our local sales tax went back to 7.75%. But I bet none of you noticed that in your shopping. So bringing that half cent sales tax wouldn't mean it's going to the state anymore. It would mean it would come locally. So I want you to think about those potential reasons for considering why new revenue is important. Because we have parks that need to be fixed, we have police and fire that need to be hired, we have equipment and infrastructure that needs to be supported for these. These are the main things that we are responsible for as a community. So to back up, I agree, we can't provide a balanced budget on something we don't have. So, solving it on the taxes is not the way to go. My preference would be to look at where we could save money this first year. So, hiring freeze, I absolutely agree. We don't do any hiring, we put a hiring freeze on for the first year of this budget. We potentially have voluntary furloughs. San Maria is looking at that. Who, who would prefer to work four days a week and, and contribute to this one year? The nonprofits that weren't funded, let's bring them back for a year, fund them for a year. Give them instruction to be aware that the funding might not be there, but you have a year to look at additional funding, where you might find it and how to restructure if you have been dependent on the city to support you for this. Because I don't want to cut them off, but I need them to start considering that we might in the long run not have this money. And then, if needed, while waiting to see if these tax measures pass, if the community says it's important for us to have a fully staffed law enforcement and fire department. It's really important for us to fix all our parks and improve the parks. If they say, yeah, you know, our visitors, they can pay a little bit more. That's on them, they're coming to see us, let them pay the 12% like they'd pay if they were staying in Santa Barbara or Beelton. While we wait to see if that, we do have a reserve. There are ways to cover waiting to see what happens. But I agree, we need to be a little aggressive right now on cutting our costs, but I don't think we need to fully fund everything. So that's my proposal.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, Councilperson Osborne, was that a whole firing freeze on PD as well?
Across the board.
Okay. Nothing I've mentioned says touching PD. PD is in the position they are, so PD needs to carry on with what they've got. They've, they've been fiscally responsible from the increases in the last several years. I don't have the numbers, I know I've got them here somewhere. But they have minimal amounts of bumps have gone on, on PD. It's these other areas that I see in here that there's opportunities and there's, there's experiments that the city has done and there's opportunities that we can put it back, reset it the way it was. You're not going to affect the services of the people out there. We can keep everything else funded and we can move forward. There's just a lot of over inflation. Remember, the, the 1113 budget was $50 million. We're looking at one right now, right around $69 million. So in that short of time, we've moved up that much. And I am fearful that any new revenue that comes in, the same thing is going to happen. There's other experiments are going to be put on the table, there's other things that are going to be overinflated and the money's going to evaporate as well. That's a, almost a 40% increase in a little more than four years. That's a sick and niffing amount of new revenue that's come in and what's happened to it. So I'm asking is that some of the items that we've done, that we go back and do a simple reset on. And if I can ask the city manager, you said you made cuts, but we didn't see these cuts in the book. I'm talking about the book that was put in front of us. So the cuts that you made, you're talking four some odd million dollars, 4.6 million?
4.1.
Okay, what, what was that money? Is that, it cuts in increases or what?
Those were scheduled capital purchases, things like fire trucks, police cars, street vehicles and like, it was capital purchases. Plus, the other agency support for the, or the things like the museum and the Chamber of Commerce. So yeah, I made cuts and you and the others voted to put them back in, so fair enough.
You had cuts in the nonprofits and capital expenditures, items that we didn't necessarily see in the book except for the nonprofits.
And I froze some positions.
Yeah, except for the ones we didn't see except the nonprofits. But I still think there's a significant opportunity to, I, I, to save money and save out of this. We need, it's about $1.6 million that we need to save. We've gone up, now granted it would be half that number because we're looking at annual versus that two-year number there. But I believe that there's an opportunity, we can find it. Granted, it is a little complex when you go through the allocation book, which brings me up too, is the, is the communication fund. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to analyze and study the communication fund. There's 13 positions in there. How are they funded? Because I went back to the cost allocation books and I can't find it funded that direction. But there's 13 position, how are they funded? How many of these are general fund positions or how many are funded by enterprises in what direction? So remember, when we're passing this book, we're also fund, passing the funding mechanism behind it. So it's important to understand that when you're giving a position over here, a GIS, is, is that being funded by electrical or who's funding that position? So it's a lot more complicated than just looking at a book and saying, yeah, it looks good, let's just pass it, we'll move forward. And I think that's where we've gone before and looking back over the years and watching how positions have morphed. Positions that were funded and had a general fund component to it, some of those, the same position is now 100% funded by the utilities. And this gets back to what Councilmember Vega was saying is that, you know, what's happening? We raised the rates, the money's gone. And as I'm seeing here, there's a lot of redirecting that as time progresses. And one of the, the biggest, oh, let's, lack of better sense, is the funding of economic development. 64% of that is coming out of utilities. Now, it had an RDA component at one time, that disappeared. But now we have a 64% funding out of, out of the, out of the enterprises. And when I pay my water bill, it doesn't say water plus economic development. And I, there's a whole layer of complexity to it when we just go and, and look at a book and say, yeah, it looks good, pass it.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I just want to make sure, I'm, I'm not sure that my entire answer was heard. I also froze eight, eight positions that made up part of the 4.1 million in cuts, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Okay, I'm going to go back several meetings where we, we voted against any tax increases. We asked for worst case, bring it back, nothing passes. So, May 30th, let me tell you what we got back. We got 1.3 million on our worst case if none of the taxes were on the ballot. Animal services, close the parks, reallocate Barkin Park to foundation, it goes down. Police department, eliminate these positions, economic and community development, a few old town analysis, et cetera. At that time, I'd made a statement, I said, I don't feel our lowest level cuts was the best we could do. These were all civic assets that we cut. It was nothing that streamlined City Hall. In turn, later, I made a motion or voted for bringing the taxes back on the table so that we could hear, okay, that's the best we can do with cuts. Let's see what we can do if we did have additional income. Now we're here again. So, the budget I don't feel was balanced as it was brought to me. We're depending on taxes out into the 2021 cycle. Our reserves are down. I don't want to go into our last $2 million to fund this budget based on assumption of taxes going. TOT, it'll pass, it affects nobody in this room. But it affects the hotel people, it affects people that work in the hotels. It's what brings the 35,000 people a night here. We are cutting our nose off in spite of our face to put TOT out there. You heard the hotel owners tell us, they work on a 50 cent to $2 margin on these tour buses. These people are not only coming here to sleep, they invade Ross, they shop everywhere. I mean, I'm not opposed to putting the taxes on the ballot, but I certainly don't want to go in here with the assumption that these taxes are what's going to bail us out of this.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank everybody here for coming out from the animal services and it's great to hear from all of you because it's important to, to know that there's caring out there. I think the presentation from my point of view was the fact that the budget from the county came up to us as non-negotiable. CPI index was slated as being 7.4%, which regardless of the percentage or how much they need or how much we're being subsidized, we all know that CPI index is not 7.4%. So I'd like for them to justify that.
Councilwoman Vega, we never said that it was a CPI adjustment. What we do is we build our own budgets, we look to see what all our costs will be and like all of us, we have a lot of increases. We did a lot of increases to the have a lot of increases. We did a lot of increases to the services that we provided at the Lompoc shelter over the last year. And that's what your pro-rata share of this year's services came out to be. It was not based on CPI at all.
Thanks for the answer. As you know, we're here to vet the budget. And you know, if we had to go out and do an RFP to see if someone could privatize it, I mean, that's what we're here to do, to see if we can save a couple bucks since it's non-negotiable with you guys because it says we're already being subsidized to a point that we should be appreciative. And, and again, the, the tone of it's mandated and you guys can't do this to us, it doesn't really come off that well. I understand it's important for us to at least have a vocabulary. I think that's all we're looking for. I think it's nothing against the animals and the, and the safety for the kids and everything. So thank you so much. Okay. Appreciate it. I also like to make a statement myself, you know, on our priority list, when we spoke about budget priorities, last time we were able to bring up some pieces of paper up here. I don't know if we had a consensus at the very end of where we were going with this when we were putting priorities out there. Did we end up coming to some sort of a methadone madness of where we were going? Or was that just, we were just writing things on these pieces of paper? Not sure if anybody remembers. Mr. Wyman, I'm not sure if you can interject into that.
Right. We had a budget, we, I'm sorry, we had a priority setting session as we do in advance of any budget process. We, we lay out and we do that every, sorry, what am I looking at?
Priorities.
Thank you. As, as we do every two years, it's called for in your handbook and, and we, we did that again this year. And I believe it was Councilmember Osborne that passed out, yes, she's, she's indicating yes, passed out.
I got mine too.
A list of, of that at the end. So I'm not sure what you were doing with it, but that was reflecting what we did earlier, earlier in the year based upon priorities. And that guides then as we put together a draft budget based upon your priorities. As I said, those things, so, so when we did some of the initial recommendations of cuts, it's based upon what's there and what's not there. There's nothing set in stone about those. It's fair game that if you, as the council, being the policy and priority setting body that you are, to say, you know, in light of new information, our priorities have shifted and this is how they've shifted, I, I think that's, that's, that's quite fair and valid for, for you to make that determination.
Thank you. I, you know, I have a, a list that I've made myself here that is all about the budget. And one of my concerns here with cutting the budget, I applaud Councilman Mosby, I think he's going in a direction here that we need to look at because I think it's probably valid. He's done a lot of homework on this. But you know, for me, I think it's really important in our priority list that we had public safety a little bit lower on the list prior. Okay. So I'd like to restate my position on this. I think for every, for, for all of our budget concerns, I think the public safety is so important that I think that they need some assistance from us as far as for retention, especially in the police department at this time. And I think that it's important. I think that the public would probably appreciate the fact that, hey, we're being policed. It's similar to the animal control thing. It's not that we were trying to give nets to the police department to go catch the animals. Okay. I think, I made a little comment last time and it was only a quip, but that's not where I was going with that. But I just think I'd like us to take another look to see if possibly, along with any of the cuts that we have, that maybe we can just take a look at, kind of taking a look at, kind of buffering what we do with them outside of any other budget cuts. It may not be what Mr. Mosby's looking like, but I, I just think that without the public safety aspect, that especially with the reduction in personnel with the police department, that we're going to suffer that way. I think that we're going to have some undesirables come in and we're not going to have anything, there's nothing we're going to be able to do, especially, you know, we talked about the animal services, hey, the calls that come out and the health and safety to kids and all that. But that, that applies to our families also. So I'd like to make, to make at least that statement, that I think that we should probably raise that up. I think where the confusion was put in was because we had a fire department and funding for the fire department. I think it all got mixed up a little bit to where we were saying, but I'd like to separate that. I, I personally think that we're doing budget cuts, but I think that the safety of our people also and the retrofit of Fire Station One should be put a little bit higher on the list without the funding of the fire department. I have a couple of things that I'm just going to state. I just think that personally on the, along with this, that it helps us cut, do our budget cuts. I believe that probably, you know, business incentives, the market rate, housing incentives, the business counter we talked about, which is already on our priority list, the rehab of sports fields. I'm not necessarily convinced at this time because of budget priorities, that the, the whole park system needs an entire revamp. I think that probably the, the part that affects all the families with their kids and the things that sell Lompoc actually by out of town tournaments and things that people take away with them and the reasons they would come back, which would help other people come in and possibly stay in a hotel or come and eat in Lompoc is basically some of the hooks that we need to sell our city. Okay. To out, that welcome thing, you know, that we always said that we don't have sometimes. But I just think that when someone's polite to you and they're nice to you, we've heard those comments that when you come to Lompoc, you know, I've heard these comments. When I went to the grocery store, people have said hi to me and stuff. So it's kind of, some people are not used to that kind of friendliness. I think on the other part, the reduction of city spending, which is right on par with Councilman Mosby, I, I agree with that part. On the other part, one of my last points here is I think zoning's really important for us to be able to sell our city. And I think that should be one of the things that we should be looking at because we talked about, we couldn't grow out of this situation. We can't build out of this, but we can tax. I don't think we always want to look at taxes. I think the taxes are, are a way that, yes, it's an outlet, but it's also like a utility increase. You know, it can only go so far. Most of the population from, my, my research has shown that the median income here in Lompoc is around $44,000 a year. Okay. That's the median income. Most of the jobs that are here, many of the jobs are here in the service industry, in the ag world. They're not extremely high paying jobs. So I, I have to say that anything that we do that's in excess is going to, is going to impact families and their children. You know, it's going to be tough when we have to have, it's a tough call, but, but it is a, it is a fact. There's going to be a point to where, hey, you're going to fix up the soccer fields and maybe these kids aren't going to be able to afford the equipment that goes into signing up for AYSO or anything else that you're going to do here in town, which also impacts the police department, which keeps people off the street. Right? You know, it's everybody that has too much time. Sometimes they, they're running around. So I think that that probably would help our community. And I, I think the goal here is to raise the quality of life. I think that the demographics, if you use, you look at the age demographics, most of the younger people, you know, they're here, but they're not here for a long time, you know. Most of, from the research that I've done, it says the average age demographic is 42 years old. So Lompoc is getting a little older. A lot of the kids that grow up are going to school and we don't know where the heck they go. So we'd like to make this place a really nice place to come back. And we'd like to have it as an alternative for our children to be able to have a choice. I think some of the growth in Lompoc is because maybe they will come back and help us grow and get involved with city council and public, public speaking and help with these groups and, and volunteer for pause and, and all these, and all these groups that, you know, I have to applaud you guys. You guys are working out there out of your own heart. The veterinarian that said, hey, she donated money out of her own pocket. I mean, hey, this is heartfelt. We're not here against the animals. The fact is, what do we do? 300,000 is 300,000. I get it. We've had people come in here and actually say, hey, we all need this. We need this. We need this. You know, I guess on the safety end, you guys have kind of hopped up a couple notches here by all showing up. So thank you.
Councilmember Vega, just a quick question. What changed your opinion on the public safety and personnel retention? Because remember, I made that the number one.
Yes.
And you voted it down to number three.
And at the time, you know, what's changed here is we see the loss of, of the police department, you know, and the fact that they seem to be stressed out to a point where we're wondering if we're, we're going to lose some of our best people, I think. So that kind of changed my mind. And the fact that you see that the retention of people and the training, you know, if, if they would stay here, if we had, I think what it was is I think the chief was looking for more people that had deeper roots here, that possibly would like to stay in a community like this. And I hate to see everyone in their own family life, work at a level where everybody's possibly stressed out. You know what I mean? I think that it probably, I think with the city, I always said, and I, and I spoke with Mr. Wyman about this, that I think that the city should handle themselves in a class act manner. And I think that whether you're hired or you're not hired, or you work for the city of Lompoc, I think you should be proud of it either way. The budget cuts are a reality. It's going to happen. But I just think that as far as the police department, I would hate to be pulled over by an officer that was already mad at the world. Okay. I mean, you know, I don't know that it happens. I'm sure they're, they're taught control. But I'm saying, you give me so many hours of overtime, you put me under duress, you make me work with a lot of people that don't respect me. You know, we don't want to push people over the edge. They can control themselves under these normal circumstances. And I'm sure they can control, control themselves with overtime. But why should we push those limits to say, hey, everyone wants to make a lot of money. We're looking at money. But at the same token, that money was done with time that was taken away from families. So your family suffers when you're gone off to work and sometimes the money. I was there once upon a time. You work 12 hours and I was always racing against the next guy that said, hey, I'll take all that overtime. Well, that guy with all the overtime, I don't think he could buy himself happiness. Okay. At the very end of the day, okay, and peace. You know, so that's why I changed my mind, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that because, and you know, the retention for both police and fire has been around for a long time, the retention issue. But thank you. I'm glad you're realizing it now. Thank you. Councilmember Osborne.
So getting back to the point of the priority list, one and two, presented by both Councilmember Starbuck and Councilmember Mosby, was market rate housing incentives and business incentives. And part of being able to design those and have those is first, having an economic development department to, A, research that, put together proposals, and then implement those that we say, yes, we, we agree, those are good policies and good incentives. Secondly, in order to be able to do that, there has to be income generated in order to, to provide some of these incentives. Some of these incentives that other communities provide is due to excess they have to give back to those to encourage them to do these things. And we don't have that excess incentive right now. So I, I, I think that the reason we've seen an increase in revenue is because we've invested in economic development. It was a high priority for several councils in a row. I think it's still a high priority for us because we do want to grow our way out of this, but somebody has to be focused on it. Somebody has to be working on it. And I can't see cutting economic development just about the time. We are staffed to do the work. We are focused on what is priority for us and we're beginning to see results from it.
Councilmember Mosby.
Actually, the, the one and two was to fix the jobs, housing imbalance in the community, which means to get some houses being built. And currently, right now, we're at the lowest just about in the history of Lompoc. So economic development's been working, but we're at zero new single-family housing. We have one triplex being built in Old Town. So when it comes to, to that, I'd have to give it an F. So economic development hasn't done squat for that. It's come out and straight say it. When it comes to, to business incentives, yes, we have some businesses moving around. We do have businesses going out almost as fast as they're coming in. The per capita incomes are down. I mean, that's, that's in the, the book. That's not, those aren't my numbers. We're actually down $100 from 10 years ago. So economic development's been out there established doing that and we've seen numbers going in reverse. So, you know, I don't, I don't see it making that movement. It's nice touting about it, but the reality is, it's, it's not doing it. And as far as, you know, Councilmember Starbuck, I mean, Vega, you had mentioned about with the fields, my, my movement on that was that the city has a, a new piece of equipment. It's about a $70,000 piece of equipment or so. It was to put that thing to work. It was over there to put the sand on the field and the leveling the fields. I, I heard it was used. I don't know how it's working. But that item, put that together. I know a lot of people were tripping and slipping at Ryan Park here recently. It's better than it has been in the past, but that was one of my ideas about that, about, about getting the turf. That was number six. Rehabilitation, rehabbing of turf in city parks. But I, I know how far down you guys want to go in there. I don't know if you, you know, want, want to get down into departments. I stayed at the upper 10,000 foot level, giving a viewpoint in there. I do have a, an analysis all the way down to the dollar to, to figure out where we can do it. We can get some money back to the utilities as well, which can help offset some utility rate increases as well. And understanding this, this again is going back in, in a funding of, of the pension programs. And this is also with, with a study like this and the numbers like this, we, we keep animal services fully funded, all the nonprofits fully funded, and we move forward. Like I said, we do a little bit of reset in, in some of the experiments that we had that we can't financially afford anymore. If we didn't have this new obligation that came around the corner, the new 10 million bump from 60 to 70, we wouldn't have to do this. But that's why you do, when you do something, you move forward. Sometimes you do have to have a little correction. And that's what we're looking at is a correction. Remember, we went up 40% in expensing. And this is a correction. This isn't like we're a catastrophe and we're throwing things away. In a couple of years, if, if it seems like that we're in a position again that we can move forward, granted, if Pers doesn't come forward and say, hey, by the way, you know, next year you owe more. But we have an opportunity to go through and do this and do a simple reset. And that's kind of what you do. I mean, that's the standard practice for businesses. The pendulum swings this way and has to swing back that way a little while. And that's, that's what I believe that we can do.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I just want to go back and remind council to now, let's look at some notes a while back. We agreed that we were going to look at four, five and six percent across the board cuts to general fund. These cuts were only going to apply for the 1719 budget. There was discussion of a pension obligation bond, but remembering that we don't have a revenue stream, not able to do that quite yet. Modification of pulling money into a capital improvement plan was discussed. Natural growth. And then resetting the budget, new positions recent and past with no new positions. We're going to look at attrition and see what kind of a savings it was going to be. There was going to, you know, the discussion of cuts to council and then bringing back the TOT utility and sales tax. So, I, I mean, these are all items that we still need to discuss on here. It appears as though what the city manager would like us to do right now is, is guidance on a worst case.
City Manager.
I think that would probably be the whole goal tonight is to be able to sit here and tell you, what is our worst case? What do we have to do? What can we do to get solvent, so to speak, for this budget cycle? I, I'm thinking that is what Mr. Wyman is looking for here.
City Manager, I think you have a comment on a couple of other comments. And then if you want to address Councilmember Starbuck.
Right. Well, let me address Mr. Starbuck's statement first. Yeah, I, I really do look to, council is the policy and priority setting body. And I would appreciate if you have particular service areas, if you have, you know, particular programs. It's not like we're sitting there with fat dripping off of all aspects of, of government. And so, hey, just cut the fat. That, that was done several years ago. So right now, what we're talking about is a reduction in services or elimination of services. And if you're able to identify what those are, then we, we can, we as staff can certainly take it from there and do, do the, do the line item work on all that. Wouldn't expect you to do it. And in fact, and we've got to get kind of careful here because we have a situation where you don't want to get into identifying, for instance, particular positions you'd want to have cut. That wouldn't be appropriate. You're, you know, so that, that would be, that would be my job to do. Your job would be to, if you said something along the lines of, for instance, you had talked about the fire department. One of the reasons what, what the safer grant had provided for in six additional fire positions was to bring about rescue, that we can provide the rescue services on three shifts. And that indeed has led to lives saved. I mean, we can show that. We can, we've got the data that can show what the survival, cardiac survival rate was before and since that. So if there's the belief, for instance, that despite that being a good thing, we want to go back to the 1113 levels of, of service for the fire department, then that would be, that, that would be clear direction to me. So that's the sort of thing I would be looking for because I, I'm not recommending you do that. I would recommend a, recommend preservation of rescue, but it's certainly valid to say, as marvelous as a service that is, for the time being, it's time, time to not do that anymore. The other comment I wanted to make and I, it's, sorry, it's a little out of pace, place, but there are just certain times I hear things and then finally I get a chance to comment on, on them as well. In terms of the ballot measure- In terms of the ballot measures, just adding options, don't kill the messenger, please, that the, if you had a belief, for instance, that the sales tax was palatable, but the TOT is not, and the utility users' tax is not, I'm just going to point out that 1% of sales tax yields about the same amount of revenue that the half a cent of sales tax, the 6% UUT, and the 2% increase in TOT would yield. So as options, and I realize if you're opposed to having the voters consider any of that, then that's not necessarily critical information to you. If you have a belief that the voters should be given the voice and the option here, but you believe it's more likely to be successful putting all of that in sales tax, I'm just letting you know, there's an option.
Thanks. Ms. Gallivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I just wanted to comment on the economic development effort that we have been making in the city for the last six years, and that the strategic plan we brought forward and continue to bring forward on a regular basis to council. In the past, the priority has always been on job creation. We're bringing commercial, tourism, industrial, and other types of businesses into the community to get wide-ranging jobs available for our community. When I first came to this community, we were at the height of the recession and the highest unemployment in the county, and we have been working on improving that since then. The most recent desire to incorporate housing as a very, the council's priority, that was done very recently as a shift, and we have since brought forward and added that to our reporting to council. As far as last week, we have convened our team to start looking at that as an element that would become part of our strategic plan. We'll be discussing it with the Economic Development Committee. We do continue to move forward, though, and have reported on housing as it goes through the planning process. In the six years I've been here, we did have new housing developments with a phase of Briar Creek opening as well. So those were single-family homes that have been added in the six years we've been working on this program. We also have been working with the Tobes Group on a community facilities district, and other projects have been given with support of council extensions so that we don't lose those housing projects. So we are working on these efforts, we want to be very responsive to the growing changes. We understand economic development can be seen in many ways with, when it comes to workforce and workforce housing, very big issues in the state right now, and also in our community as well as workforce preparation and education. So as soon as you, as a body, let us know where your priorities are shifting, we are trying to respond and move the needle on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
And if I might just add on and appreciate Ms. Gallivan expanding on that, because I had that in my notes as well, just to address the successes we've had with our economic development efforts. I stated earlier in the budget process, will state it again, we're experiencing all-time highs in the three areas of revenue for the general fund, sales tax, property tax, and TOT. And I don't believe those are happening by accident, especially in comparison to how the regional economy's going, and that we're outpacing those. So it's not just that the ocean waters are rising and all boats are rising, we're actually out distancing the neighboring communities in terms of our, the increases. As to housing, we definitely need, there's one aspect, I totally agree, we need, we definitely need market rate housing here in Lompoc, no doubt. I experienced that person, quite personally, for quite some time. To do that, though, we all need to be on the same team, we all need to be working toward the same things. And one of the things that will help is if the planning commission and the city council will both take a hard look anytime there's a request for an extension on MAPS. Because a lot of times, if somebody has multiple potential projects going on in multiple communities, and they're going, asking everybody if they can have an extension because they only have so much capacity, if we grant the extension and none of their other locations, none of the other jurisdictions grant an extension, then they're going to be building in the other places, they're not going to be building here. But definitely, we advocate for the expansion of the housing market, and we as staff have worked hard to do annexations to bring in other units, and we'll continue to work toward that as you direct that work to be done. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Again, I'd like, I think Councilman Mosby has been very clear here that the pendulum is swinging and does need to swing a certain way, but I'd like to also mention that Councilman Starbuck, that again, you mentioned the pension bond, but Patrick has already said that that wasn't a viable option, so I think that we should scratch that one off, because it wasn't regardless of the funding. I think that possibly, you know, the TOT tax, you know, one of the reasons I'm against is I hate, I would hate to be a business owner building right in the middle of a city, and all of a sudden, the city's rewarding me by adding an extra tax that's really not viable, okay? And actually, the 10% in Santa Maria with the larger city, I get it, other people are paying for it, but I, as a past restaurant owner, I do understand the demographics of them trying to retain business as far as on the tourism side of everything. Those people that come into town are very frugal. Someone made a point to me the other day that these people also come in here and they come in here on these little budgets, I don't know exactly where they get these little budgets, but they wanted to eat on a dime, and they want to stay anywhere for a nickel. And they would still go in there and walk around town, you probably see them sometimes, and they'll go to Ross, and they'll buy clothes, or they'll go somewhere. They're walking around town, spending some money. So I think that's one of the main reasons, as far as a business incentive, I don't think it makes us look that good, to say, hey, Lompoc has always had this little tag about, hey, are you business friendly or not? You know, we'd like to present that, yes, we are, and we'd like to have an incentive to any other developers that want to come in here. I think that probably the other option, if voters were going to get to vote on a referendum, would be the 1% sales tax is better than a half, I guess, but if that would take care of that. But I think, I think that, I'm not against the voters getting a shot at it, but I'm against any tax against a business that's currently building and looking to build. And they're investors in this community, they're not just singular, they're not brand-new, they've been here, they support many projects, and I kind of think it's a slap in the face when they've offered to tax themselves on Explore Lompoc, and all of a sudden, hey, you know what, that's not good enough. They actually are helping the Chamber of Commerce, they're actually helping Lompoc, they're trying to bring in business to all the businesses, not just their own, whether it's Skydive, whether it's, you know, the airport, whether it's anything here. I think their website was geared toward any business that wanted to come into Lompoc, hey, we'll sell it. Any group, there's groups that have also applied for funding, and I think that they've offered and given grants out in support of, so it's hard for me to go get something like that.
Yeah. I thank you for that, Councilmember Vega. You've, but I'd like, I'd just like to point out that so far, you've indicated that you're against raising fees, you're against putting taxes out for the voters to vote on, and now you've, thankfully, you've come around to see that we do need to protect public safety. That doesn't leave us with many options, so no fees, no taxes, protect public safety, and by the way, public safety salaries and benefits is, I believe, about 60% of the salaries. Is that a close figure? Brad?
If I can recall the May 2nd presentation, I think public safety is 70% of the general fund, and 70% of that is compensation.
Yeah. So I mean, that leaves us very little other areas. No fees, no taxes, protect public safety, which I thank you for. Where are we going to balance this budget? Do you have some ideas?
Yeah, and just another comment here, I understand, you know, that we need to find money in the budgets, you know, that's why I'm listening to Councilman Mosby to see what he has to offer here and some strong guidance so that we can hear this. I think the continued utility increases are not always the answer. We argue that we can't build out of it, we argue that it's only $6 to $10, and $6 to $10 multiplied by multiple years of increases are taking away from families. From the research that I've done here, that it says here that Lompoc here from the Census Bureau is 21.3% of the population are living below the property line, which is higher than the national average of 14.7%. So again, you know, we have to remember that we have subscribed to affordable rental housing, we've allowed groups to just advocate that everyone should come here, and we have taken on more than our share in the county of affordable rental housing, and still, we had a project that was just passed and overturned by the state as far as bond issue to say, hey, Lompoc, you can still take some more. Yet, we don't recognize that. So the people that are in these service industries, which, again, these are service industries, these are people that are working the hotels, these are people that work in ag, these people there are going to feel the impact of this, so how do we do this, okay? We've, time and time again, said we were going to, we needed to raise the bar, but what have we really done, okay? What have we really done? Okay? We just need to think about this and where we're going to go. So basically, what we have here is, conjointly, we have to get together and say, what do we want to do for this city? So that people understand that we do feel, just as the animal services people are here, we feel for the people that are out there. It's just not about this. It's very difficult to go there and find these amounts of money. So again, I applaud Mr. Mosby in the direction he's going.
Councilmember Mosby.
Again, I don't know how deep you guys want me to go on analysis, but...
I think what Mr. Wyman is saying, he'd like to give you, he'd like you to give him some macro areas.
Well, I did give some off the beginning. Again, maybe I left out the general fund library, and that went from 1.7 to 2.3 million. So I mean, that's, there's some significant increases, and of course, generally where you increase the most is where you have the potential for resetting the most. So, I mean, I, again, I'd like to see a little bit more solid analysis of the communication fund, and then when you look at that page, you see that there's 13 positions, but there's really no way to find out what we're doing. I think there's a, we're moving up to four GIS positions, do we really need four GIS The public works and the engineering, that was a movement from 1.8 to 2.7. Likewise, in community development and the planning department specifically, you know, we, you know, I know it's difficult getting to the position we are, but we, you know, we got to make some tough cuts, and I think there's areas there as well. The building inspection program, are there ways to make that? Going back with the old way that we had the fire marshal position, where the fire chief was the fire marshal, and the acting battalion chief was the deputy fire marshal. That was another position that we saved a significant amount of money, that was a newness that came through. In the area of city administration, that advancement's up to, and I don't know if all the seats are the same, and it's hard to compare exactly in the 0911 budget all the way through, because the alignments aren't exactly correct, but city administration went from 2.8 to 4.2 million. So are there some areas in there? Are there vacancies right there that we don't need to fill? And I think there are some in some of these dimensions right now. Are there some creative ways that fire department has to come through with that they can help us to, you know, I've been doing some calculations, trying to figure out how we went from 7.3 to 11.6, and that's not in personnel expense, I'm not exactly sure how we had that big growth component there, but calculating how we got to where we are and finding out, I know that the big movement we still had in 0911 on fire, we had 25.4 positions, and now on fire, we have, what, 29.8, something like that? I mean, we didn't, we didn't go up significantly in personnel, so that didn't, that didn't make the, that dollar movement from 7.3 to 11.6, and I know there's some overtime and stuff in there, but what's in there that caused that, that number to move? I mean, I know they're not getting paid that much more, so I mean, there's, there's got to be something there. You know, there's several new positions that came on in this budget cycle that we're under currently right now, and I think we need to put everything on the table. And we'd look at every one of those and see, is it time? Is it time, did we do it too early? Can we hold off? Maybe in a couple of years, we bring that back, but maybe it's something that we did that, you know, did a little early. And, you know, again, you know, as you were, you're quoted in the newspaper, we're at a pivotal point, and we are at a pivotal point. We need, we need to put this on the table, and everybody needs to understand, we are at a pivotal point, but I think we can cover all the other services and just tighten up in those areas and do a level of calculation to see, you know, where we know we have some issues in the building department there. There's, seem to be some cost overruns happening, we don't have a lot going through, we anticipated a lot more than we did, and I think we have $200,000 to $300,000 a year there that we're, that we're of loss. And is there, we know, I know we had some complications having it as an independent contractor, not necessarily go that, and I know you had mentioned it before, that that's an area you're looking into as well. So, you know, and those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, those nine areas, I think that we can, we can find some ways and talk to the departments. I've actually had people outreach into me and say, hey, you know, we could do this, this, and this, and being creative with our movements, and I think the people can work together. It's, that's what we're going to have to do, is everybody's going to have to realize, this is about their pension, the city staff, this is about making this work for all of us. And I believe the amount of money that we need to trim. Now, remember, when the chart came through, the 6%, that already had a 2% increase, and then the 6% was calculated. So we need a 4% net, net cut is what we need, and I think we can do it. It's a doable, the county got through it, and I don't know if you noticed, the city of Santa Maria is doing a big movement as well themselves, and I think the people, the city staff can assist and find ways to help out as well.
Just a reminder, Councilmember Mosby, I don't know if, one of the positions, the new positions that was proposed was actually a position to save the city money, that was that maintenance technician, so I don't know if you want city staff to consider not hiring that, even though it was demonstrated that it was going to save money, but they can look at that. Councilmember Osborne.
So being respectful of Councilmember Mosby's referral to exact positions, I'd like to go back and talk to policy. And our policy is to take care of city business. And I hate to say it, but it's not city business to fund the chamber, but I'm okay with funding them for a year so that they can plan for a transition. I think it's very important to fund domestic violence because that is part of our public safety. It's an integral part that has saved our community a lot of money by having that voice there. I think it's important to protect our museum because it is in the cornerstone of our community, and it works as part of one of our parks, it's one of our buildings. Everything else is not our city responsibility. I offer up a one-year contract to each of them in order for them to better understand that the city can't fund them anymore unless there's a change in our revenue, and move forward on the idea of a hiring freeze, voluntary furloughs, and then putting forward propositions on the ballot. I'm sorry that those of you feel that you're taxing local business. I heard one hotel owner say that his model is based on contracts that are 50 cents to a dollar, that's his room rate he needs to adjust. I respect him for choosing that as his business model, but that is not every hotelier in town, and they will not lose business if they adjust their contract by their room rates because that's what those contracts are looking at. So I get it, but we need to share this load, and we need to give the community a chance to give us feedback on if they're willing to partake in sharing the load, not just put it on our employee backs. So I agree that Councilmember Mosby has pointed out several areas where we could potentially trim or put on hold hirings. I would love to hear if there's anybody who has volunteer furloughs and wants to help out and considers it... out and considers it a contribution to making sure that we can pay the pension fund. I appreciate the idea that we take the pension fund off, but that wasn't a cost-saving model. The whole idea for discussing it was to find a model that allowed us to lock in an interest rate that we could predict. So it's off the table at the moment, but it could become viable if we had a revenue source to help pay for that. So again, I fully support us finding a balanced budget based on what can we trim, but I also think fully funding these other entities that are not city responsibilities is foolhardy for longer than a year unless we see a change in our revenue.
Okay. Councilman Vega, I'll get to you in a second. City manager, from comments that have been made by Councilman Mosby, Councilman Osborne, do you need any clarification on any one of their directions?
No, I appreciate it. I'd like to have the opportunity to return with the plan, if it's the pleasure of the council as a whole, or the council as a majority, to get, to follow both Mr. Mosby and Ms. Osborne's recommendations. We'd like to put, we'll look forward to putting together a presentation, coming back to the next session, which I assume will be the July 18th meeting, unless you wanted to meet some other time.
We'll talk about a sooner date possibly.
Okay. Anyway, so I, I don't think I need more clarification, because I'm worried. I appreciate that we've kept it at the 10,000-foot level, and I'm, I'm concerned more clarification might bring it down below that glide path.
I'm gonna go to Vega. How about Councilmember Osborne's? Is she, do you have anything to clear with hers?
Councilmember Osborne and I have agreed and disagreed on a number of things, and while I've already instituted some freezes and would look at others, I know you earlier in the evening had said something about that, including PD too. My worry and what I would ask you to reconsider on that stance is they, if they were normally staffed, I'd feel a lot more comfortable. We are so short-staffed there. We really need to add, we, we need to unfreeze some positions and get bodies into place.
Then I would expect both fire and police to look at things like you originally suggested in their police department for things like reducing training or reducing some other positions that aren't impacted by our police officers or, or firefighters going out. So if both departments will look at where they can cut on other areas that don't impact personnel or benefits, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Councilman Vega.
I'd like to applaud Councilman, Councilwoman Osborne as far as on the no longer funding groups or entities outside of Longhoke. Unless they impact our public safety, I think probably we should take a look at it. I think with animal services, you know, I think we should probably take a hard look at maybe maintaining the services and extent, we, we can't vote on it now, but I mean, until we have a Plan B in place, I think that probably would be prudent, but that's just a thought process here. Councilman Mosby, as you gave your list, was economic development on there, or did you pull that off as far as the list that you wanted to in transparency? Was that another issue? Or did you back off from that? Or was that stated clearly to city, our city manager?
That was stated to the city manager?
I just wanted to make sure for myself if that was partly on your list, so we don't have to come back. Thank you.
Councilman Mosby first.
My comment was that, that we didn't do anything to take any revenues or positions from PD. Like I said, PD has been tight all the way through. I think it's about an 8% bump in the last four years. I mean, that's, they're even below the cost of living, so I don't look at touching them at all. I think they've done more than their fair share.
Councilman Starbuck.
Joe, this is a question for you. I had somebody ask and actually went in and did a little research on this. What if we don't pay our PERS obligation? All we've been told is, oh, we'll get sued. But I do have, out of the whole 20-some pages that the judge put down, there was one little paragraph that caught me, and it says, CalPERS does not bear financial risk from reductions by the city in its funding payments because state law requires CalPERS to pass along the reductions to pensioners in the form of reduced pensions. Rather, it is the pensioners present and future themselves who are at risk of the loss. I don't expect you to have the answer. This is reams of paper, but I think next time we get together, that judge decision, you know...
What are you reading from?
It was the, the actual court document transcript there.
From, from what court case?
The Stockton bankruptcy.
Thank you.
If I may, more immediate to anything that would relate to those reductions you mentioned, failure to pay our obligations timely, incur a 10% per day interest rate, and a 10% penalty for a non-payment. So those accrue to the city until we are current with our payments. When, I just want to make clear that we are current with our payments and have always been current with our payments, but CalPERS has issued two circulars that I received today that mention that those penalties and interests are due when somebody's in arrears.
Well, it's such a pleasure for me to deal with accounts and attorneys. I really am layman in this. That's why I did ask the attorney. I just, you know, throw it out there. We're so focused on 70 million, we've known about 60, and then all of a sudden, I read this, and I'm going, true, false? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I did want to update council very quickly because Mr. Starbuck's question and comments sparked my memory on this. We are still working and lobbying some, some group of, of cities on the central coast are working together, and then obviously, we're working with the League of California Cities as well. We, we aren't just, I, I wanted to give you some assurance, we're not just sitting here and taking numbers that CalPERS is shooting at us and rolling over and, you know, just trying to figure out how we're gonna live through those. We certainly are trying to come up with a plan for the numbers they're giving us, but at the same time, we are going through examining a number of issues and lobbying hard to eventually toward the legislature and how they set what's going to happen going forward with CalPERS and some of the, some of the rules that are in place that if, while there's some things we can't adjust so much, there are other things. And one thing I, I believe Mr. Wilkie had mentioned early on, and one of the areas of focus we have, for instance, is that while employees may, you know, courts have decided, have, have, have determined that a past employee or current employee at the time that they're hired, what they were so, what they were promised in terms of pension benefits, they have this property right to that, they were not promised cost of living adjustments through their retirement. And that, eliminating that alone would, by some calculations, eliminate our whole issue that's going on here. We'd no longer have an excess unfunded liability, we'd have a fully funded liability in that case. And we've got some, just some other things going on. The central California city managers, the central coast city managers for both San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara Counties were convening on August 3rd, along with finance directors and the like, to get together, and we're just focusing for half a day on the PERS issues and how we're going about attacking a number of, of the, of the rules that are being tossed out that are not necessarily supported by law and things that could eventually bring us all some financial and economic relief. And I just wanted to update the council on that, that we are actively working more than just trying to resolve how to pay what they say we owe, but we are actually taking action to challenge the amounts based upon assumptions that are being made, also looking at things like their investment policy, because that ultimately is driving discount rates and how much is, is considered to be unfunded on our parts, and just a couple of other areas like that. So I just wanted you to be aware that we are fighting this in a number of, on a number of planes. Thanks.
Councilman Vega.
I'd like to thank the city staff, the city manager, all the department heads, especially in finance. I know it's been difficult to come in with these proposals. I think that Councilman Mosby is bringing up options here that aren't any different than any other city that already has imploded financially, and I, that's why I'm actually supporting those efforts, because in any other city, through my research, they've already maintained cuts and, and been lean in certain departments, because they're probably mandated by it. Right now, we're trying to be, do the, do the smart thing and do it ourselves to see if we can make it all happen, because we don't, Longhoke never wanted to be in this, in this situation. Again, you know, the state, CalPERS and everything, put us in a, in a hard position where every state, there's, there's state, cities out there that haven't been able to pull themselves out. We're in a unique position because we can make a few smart moves and balance our budget. So thank you.
Councilman Mosby.
If I, if I can make a suggestion with the budget book itself, and I know it's late in the year to come forward with this, but in going back and looking at previous budget books and then realizing that, you know, the old budget books had, they had eight columns of numbers that were there for, for us to look at. And what they had, the columns that they had that we don't have, is we have the actual number that was spent on an item. So a lot of times, we adopt a number, as you see in our book, we've got adopted, adopted, requested, proposed. And in their case, they had the two-year, they had an actual, year one actual, year two act, uh, budget, year two to date, year two to date, year one budget, year two budget, and the two-year budget. So it was able to see, because in some of our cases here, things that we had, that were adopted in the la, in the last or the current budget cycle, they didn't actually spend all those, or maybe they spent more. And what I've had to do is go back to the, the CAFRA report and try to digest that and bring it backwards to see where the numbers are. And I think it's important to see that actual number there, because especially if we're going in here and, and you see something that was adopted, but then they actually spent more or less, and they're asking for more or less, you can see why. Well, heck, they wanted that, but they needed more. That's why they're doing it. So it makes a report a little bit more readable and understandable of what really happened. And I just think that moving forward, we should look at putting an actual line in there so we can, a lot of times, we can see, well, this is why you're asking for it, because you needed more last time. Or likewise, if you're going less, it, it answers a lot of questions when you're analyzing that way. So just maybe a suggestion moving forward. I know it's way too late in the game to do that now, but I think having a, an actual line there shows the true up that, that moved forward.
Okay. Everyone's last shot. Councilman Vega, I mean, I know you stated that you're in favor of Councilman Mosby's suggestions. Anything else from you specifically?
No, I, I hear you, uh, Mr. Mayor, that we haven't come up with a lot of budget cuts other than his proposals to have the city manager take a look at something else, and I know it's pretty drastic. I think with the sales tax initiative, I, I think that probably, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to putting it out to the voters, but we do have to figure out whether we're gonna go with a half cent or a one, one cent sales tax as a referendum, as noted. That's one way of solving not going after the TOT. I'm not an advocate of taxes at all, but I also think the voters probably should have a choice on some of this. Very important.
Okay. Councilman Mosby, do you have anything else that you want to give towards?
Just, just for everybody out there, I, I pose these as questions, and I pose the items to the city manager's questions. I'm not making statements, so just trying to investigate it all.
Okay. Councilman Osborne, anything additional?
I think I've said more than enough.
Councilman Starbuck.
No, I'd like to have another meeting real soon, as soon as we could, after you get the numbers. What, how long would it take you to put this together?
Well, first of all, before you say that, do we have a consensus from the council that we want city manager to put the, put the numbers together as proposed by Councilman Mosby? And you're also gonna put together Councilmember Osborne's suggestions.
I'm, I'm considering his nine areas of recommended examination and her three to be a body of things from which to find 4% cut in the general budget, general fund budget to bring back for your consideration. And understanding that it'll involve a number of tools like cuts or position freezes, interesting, I'm looking forward to find out if there are voluntary furloughs, for instance, out there, maybe. So we'll look at any number of combinations, but I understand my goal to be to bring back a proposed 4% in cuts within the areas that are suggested. And I think there was consensus that I, if, if there are ultimately, that rather than doing across-the-board freezes, I could be a little more selective, at least in this case, protecting PD from a freeze.
PD, is it public safety, PD and fire, or just PD? Because I believe...
I'm talking about PD right now. I, I'd reserve, I, I'd appreciate being allowed to reserve the, the decision-making on my part, whether I would freeze positions in fire or any place else for that matter. I just anticipate I would not be recommending to you to freeze positions in, in police department.
Okay. Okay, so you have clarification on both Councilman Osborne and Councilman Mosby?
I, I, yeah, and I, I, just to get clear too, all these cuts are to come from internal, not from, and to hold harmless any cuts to any outside organization. Did I hear all that correctly? I see at least three nods.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Osborne, you...
Mine was concerns over only issuing one-year contracts for those outside entities.
Well, yeah, and I've only heard that from you, so I haven't included that yet till...
Okay, and I'm gonna descend from that, from the entire thing, because everyone knows my motion I began, I made in the beginning, so I'll be descending from the 4%. Councilman Vega.
I'm okay with that. I'd like to hear Councilwoman Osborne just re-clarify about the outside positions in which you were proposing. Was that all of them, or just a few?
So domestic violence, fully support for two years. Chamber of Commerce, just one year of funding with no advertising. Sorry, I have to get back far enough to read. Longhoke Museum for the two years, C3H for one year.
Animal control is not part of that, so don't, you guys don't worry about that.
No, animal control's not part of that.
That's a separate issue.
I'd like to take another look at, my own personal feeling is, take a look at it without C3H, but that's just my personal feeling. I'm okay with the other two.
How about doing C, C3H at the current one, not the anticipated increase? I think it's 16,000 is what they were looking at?
Yeah.
And they were wanting to increase that, so keep it set at what they are? And I, I, I think we need to keep the, the chamber on the table and, and keep their, their advertising budget intacted, intact. I mean, it's kinda hard to have a, a chamber that can't advertise. I mean, you're kinda cutting their wings.
There was a comment made that they said they could get by without it, and it makes them work harder also.
Oh, then that's, then that's...
I think as far as the budget cuts is concerned...
If they, if they can come back, let's anticipate it, let's have the chamber come back with some savings as well. I mean, we, we need to hear from, from all of them as well.
No, I got you, but I'd, I'd like to, hey, we shouldn't ignore it if they say they can get by with it. That's my issue. If we're gonna cut, let's, let's listen for them if they can make it.
If you can verify that she can do that, I'll go with that as for sure, as well. Cut the, the advertising budget with the chamber. The...
I'd like to still keep the advertising budget off until they say they can't do it, or something happens, or...
Right. The, the item was of, the equivalent of the 4% cut of the total, it wasn't just 4% in, in each one of those.
Right, and that's, that's what, and I appreciate that giving, that, that gives staff and gives me some flexibility to work where we might take more in some areas and less in others, and, but our, our goal is the 4%.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, we wanna look at...
Well, if I could just, I'm not sure...
If you had a light here for me, I could... If you had a light here for me, I could tell.
I'm not sure we've got unity on that last little bit, and I just want to make sure what I include is, is clear. Can I, I don't know how you want to proceed. Can we do individual polling just on the little, the little pieces there?
Sure.
And do you mind, do you mind if I facilitate that from here?
Please do.
Fine, great. So, there were, regarding the chamber, I heard one year, I heard two years with advertising, and I heard one year no advertising and may have heard one year with advertising. So, let's start off of, let's just not talk about advertising just for the moment, talking about chamber support. Can you buy a show of hands how many would like to leave a two-year chamber support in the budget?
Is that without, that's without advertising?
Right, right now, we're just talking about the, the support that we give. Yeah, so I'm not discussing advertising yet.
Okay.
Just on the issue, two-year support, there's two of you, three of you. Okay, and just so we've got it on the record, one-year piece for the other two was yours. Okay, thank you. So, I'll build that with two years. Now, on the advertising, advertising in, advertising out, that was $75,000.
For, for both years or one?
Two, for two years.
Seventy-five thousand for two years.
I'd like to leave it out just because of the comments that were made until something else comes up personally, some incident.
Out?
I'll go with that too.
Okay.
I think maybe keep it in just in case something happened to Explorer Lompoc. Remember, they contribute 50/50 with Explorer Lompoc. So, I mean, to, to cut them out on that, I'd...
And Mayor, just so you're on the record?
I'm out.
Thank you. Museum was two years. I think everybody was in agreement on that. Rape crisis center, two years. Everybody was in agreement on that.
That was victim advocate, right?
Right, correct.
Or rape crisis, separate?
Well, no, it's all, that's all the same thing. The only reason I call it the way I do is we send the money to the organization. They hire somebody and provide that victim's advocate to PD, but I'm, I'm focused on who we pay the money to. And C-3H was the other one that I was unsure about. I believe, Mr. Mosby, you're in favor of two-year support at current level because they also did request an increase. But you're in, Mr. Starbuck, you're in favor of two years at current level? Two years at current level? One year at current level?
One year at current level.
One year at current level, thank you. I think I've got everything now. I'm fairly clear on everything else. Thank you.
Okay, so let's look at our calendars. How long will it take you? Can you have it done by tomorrow?
Oh, biblically, yes.
Okay, so let's, give us a...
A day is like a thousand years, right?
Give us an idea of how long you think...
A couple, can we, can we go a couple of weeks out? Because this is going to take us a little bit of time. I, I think even at that, we're going to be flying, especially we've got some key people that have other things going on in our life.
Then I think we're going to go for the July 18th meeting.
That would be, that would be good for me. Now, that, that's already a pretty heavy meeting, but hopefully, we're getting down to the final strides on the budget and we'll have something we can work with and maybe I'll come to an agreement.
Okay.
And do you know how heavy closed session is right now on that draft? It's at 5:30 already. Is there any desire to move up the starting time that, that whole, for, for that particular evening? The, you've got a pretty heavy agenda sitting there already on, on the 18th. And I know it's difficult for some of you because you've got other jobs and other lives, but just wonder if that...
Councilmember Starbuck, how early could you start? We realize with closed session, if we start council meeting at 5:30, closed session would probably be at 4:30.
No, I, I mean, I can make a schedule, absolutely.
Councilmember Mosby?
There's nothing we could do earlier with the budget? I mean, a few days, just...
If, if you'd like me back sooner with something, we'll get something together, but...
I was thinking, you know, the 13th possibly is a budget meeting?
We've got two months. We could do, I guess, the 13th. Would you have it ready on the 13th?
I will make it ready on the 13th.
Can everyone make the 13th?
Yes.
Councilmember?
It's a Thursday.
Would that be at 6:30 then, since it's a dedicated meeting?
Councilmember Mosby?
That's the only day at a County Parks Commission meeting.
Ouch.
Not at night.
At night, so, they do, man.
What's your timeframe on that, Mr. Mosby?
That's, that's a six o'clock at night, only one at night. They have a big deal with Galida Beach going on. Yeah, I know, so. I didn't commit because I told them budget is a priority, so. No, we got to do it, we got to do it. That's, that'll be the only one I missed in five years, so. They'll have to fight that battle without me.
13th, okay with everyone else?
Unless we moved it back a day on the 12th?
12th, we'd be, 12th we'd be...
No, oh, God, that was, okay. There's a planning commission meeting, sorry. Oh, there we go.
They can go in the conference room. Just kidding, just kidding.
Ouch.
Councilmember Starbuck?
13th?
Your light is on, Joe. 14th is first night of Old Town Market, so we, I mean...
And the...
And there's also a league dinner that...
League dinner, yeah.
I'm out of town. 13th? Okay, 13th at 6:30 PM. Okay, Thursday, 13th. Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Mosby?
I just want the people to know, with the animal services, this is bringing and funding that, correct?
Yes.
So, just people out there didn't catch that? That mechanism comes back to place as well.
On the 18th, we're going to bring that back for them to undo what you did last time.
Right, but there's stuff on the 13th, that analysis includes funding that.
Yeah, right, right. On the 13th, we'll, we'll include the, the assumptions of full funding.
We'll bring back on the 13th, you to be able to undo what you did.
Correct, okay. Okay. You guys should be happy. Okay. But that doesn't mean it's all solved yet. We still have a long way to go, but that is good news for you. Okay, so we're coming back the 13th with another draft. Anything else? I want to thank you all for attending. It was enlightening, I think. And I want to thank you for everything, everything you do for the animals of this community. So, thank you. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.